If you're a Bethel resident and you're registered to vote, you need to check in with the table over there, get an orange card to vote with. We're working off the yellow or golden rod warrant. Town meeting started yesterday when the polls opened at 8:00. And at that time, we elected Dutch Dresser as the moderator. So I'll turn the meeting over to Dutch.
Thank you, Kristen. We have a couple of items of business before we get into the warrant. The election results of yesterday. Selectmen, three years. Patricia McCartney, 299. Lori Swain, 333, elected. Lloyd Sweetser, 433, elected. Selectmen, two years. Neil Scanlon, 559, elected. Assessor for three years. Michelle Verulo, 549, elected. Robert Blake, 18, elected. SAD 44 Director, three years. Margaret Davis, 400, elected. Stephanie Herreck, 371, elected. David Jones, 218. The annual report this year is dedicated to Donnie and Cheryl Bennett, who contributed much to this town over the years. And they have written a thank you, which I'll read for them in their absence, their social distancing. "To our wonderful town, being recognized in our town by having the annual town report dedicated to us for doing the things we loved is priceless. We both feel blessed for living in a community where we always felt we belonged. The things we did were always done out of caring for and because of the people around us. This made it easy to try and give back a bit of ourselves as a gesture of appreciation and the belief that we must all participate locally when we can to assure that our town remains what it has always been, a great place to live and raise our family. From the bottom of our hearts, Donnie and Cheryl." Let's see if I actually need the microphone. Can you hear me this way? All right. If you can't, if you can't hear me, just speak up. I'll try and do it that way. Okay, so for those of you who haven't done this much before, let's go through how this works. I'll read an article from the warrant and some generous soul from among you will move the article as written. In the case of Article III, for example, somebody else will second it. And then we can begin discussion on the article. After discussion's ended, we'll vote on the article and move on to the next one. Most of the articles in tonight's warrant are money articles. And the way the motion is made on those is to move the article in the amount of. So you might say, I moved Article 103 in the amount of $7.97. We'd get a second and then we'd discuss it. The amount can be amended during the discussion, but the wording of the article cannot. If you are not a citizen of Bethel and would like to speak, it will take a two-thirds majority of those present voting to allow you to speak. And I'd suggest we practice that now by voting to allow our town manager, Loretta, to speak when she needs to. So all those in favor of allowing Loretta to speak? Thank you. And those opposed? Where's your husband?
He didn't go.
Okay, so we begin. Article III, "To see if the town will accept a governor's deed from the state of Maine for the realignment of a portion of Fleming Road and maintain said portion of Fleming Road as a townway."
Move to Article III as read.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to second on Article III. Here's that discussion. Seeing none, those in favor of Article III. And those opposed? Thank you. Article III is carried unanimously. Article IV, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend unexpended FY 2020 and any other previous year's capital improvement road funds to fund remaining projects on the road improvement list."
Move to Article IV as read.
Thank you. Any second? We had a second. Thank you. Here's the discussion on Article IV. Seeing none, those in favor of Article IV. Thank you. And those opposed? Article IV is carried. Article V, "To see if the town will vote to ratify the actions of estimated overdrafts of fiscal year 2020." And you can see the department's overdrafts listed below. And before you ask questions, I will. Could we please talk about the $30,000 overdraft?
We have, since we've had the COVID-19, we've had an astronomical amount of people cleaning up. So, and the prices for to get rid of our solid waste, construction debris, metals, has all increased. So this is where it's hitting us hard right now.
Do we have a motion on Article V?
Move to access Article V in the amount of $30,000.
Thank you. Second?
Can I ask a question?
Discussion, yes, please.
Can I, do you expect that to go down next year?
No. Because I think the prices are all going up for everything.
But it was because of COVID-19?
Well, part of it was because of it, but yeah. A lot of construction going on right now.
Other questions? Discussion on Article V. Seeing none, those in favor of Article V. Thank you. And those opposed? Article V is carried. Article VI, "To see if the town will vote to fix dates when property taxes will be due and payable and to see if the town will fix a rate of interest on property taxes unpaid after said dates. The selectmen recommend taxes will be due and payable in two equal installments, October 1, 2020, and April 1, 2021. An interest will be charged on unpaid amounts at a rate of 9% annual as of November 2, 2020, and May 3, 2021."
I'd like to move Article VI as read with the exception of instead of 9%, I would like to have it be 8%.
I think we need to move it, get it on the table, and then amend it.
So I move it in the as read with the 9%.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. Now a discussion. You'd like to offer an amendment to change 9% to 8%?
Yes. My understanding is it should be 8% not 9%.
Thank you. Is there a second to the amendment?
What was the previous picture, straight?
Nine.
Was it a nine?
Yeah. It's supposed to be eight, and it didn't get changed in the warrant in time.
Okay. So we're now discussing the amendment to change the 9% to 8%. Is there other discussion on the amendment?
So just to be clear, the selectmen are recommending 8%. Is that correct?
It's a state recommendation. The state tells us how much we can charge. And it was nine last year, and it got in here as nine, and it should have been eight. It didn't get changed in time. The state tells us what the maximum rate is we can charge.
Okay. Still, the selectmen are recommending 8%.
Yes.
However it comes.
Other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment to alter to 8%? Thank you. And those opposed? Now an article on the main motion as amended? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the article as amended? Thank you. And those opposed? The article's carried as amended. Article VII, "To see if the town will vote to accept estimated federal, state, and local non-property tax revenues and designated donations to reduce the FY 21 property tax commitment as described below." You can read those as well as I. Do we have a motion on Article VII?
I'll move Article VII in the amount of $1,364,050.
Thank you very much. Discussion on Article VII. Questions or discussion? Yes?
Questioning the veterans' homestead and tree for $90,000?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
The veterans' homestead and tree?
Tree growth.
For $90,000?
Tree growth.
Tree growth.
Tree what?
Tree growth.
It goes on to the next line.
Oh, tree, okay. Oh, I didn't see the growth. Okay.
You okay?
Yes.
Any other questions? Discussion? Yes.
What's the growth?
Loan proceeds?
Loan proceeds?
Loan proceeds.
Waste water treatment plant.
Oh, I could find it. The town loan to the wastewater treatment plant, and that's our payback.
What's the growth represented for?
Growth is, goes with veterans' homestead and tree growth. That's one. It wrapped around.
All set? Any other discussion on Article VII? All those in favor of Article VII? Thank you. And those opposed? Article VII is carried. Article VIII, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for administration in FY 21." The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $225,523.
I'll move Article VIII in the amount of $225,523.
Thank you. Discussion about Article VIII. Seeing none, those in favor of Article VIII. Thank you. And those opposed? Article VIII's carried in the amount recommended. Article IX, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of town clerk department in FY 21. Budget Committee and Selectmen recommend $102,504."
I'll move Article IX in the amount of $102,504.
Thank you. Article IX, discussion on Article IX.
I just have a comment. I wish we could see a percentage growth rate or change here. That would help to analyze, in this case, the difference between 93.7% and 100%.
It's like about 8%.
Yeah, it is, but...
It went up because of, mostly from elections. We have to rent the Legion Hall for our elections, and before we used to use the school for nothing. We've had, have to rent another voting machine. So those are all more costs.
Yeah, that's a helpful comment. Thank you.
Other discussion on Article IX? Those in favor of Article IX in the amount of $102,504? Thank you. And those opposed? The article's carried as carried. Article X, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the Assessor's Department FY 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $50,500."
Motion to move Article XV to $500.
Thank you. Discussion about Article X. Seeing none, those in favor of Article X. Thank you. Those opposed? Article X is carried in the amount of $50,500. Article XI, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the Finance Department in FY 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $98,547."
Make a motion to move Article XI to $98,547.
Thank you. Discussion on Article XI. Seeing none, those in favor of Article XI. Thank you. Those opposed? Article XI is carried in the recommended amount. Article XII, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the Planning and Development Department in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $78,076."
Make a motion to move Article XII to $78,076.
Second? Thank you. Discussion on Article XII.
What is that change about?
Legal services. We added a line to them for legal services.
Other questions? Seeing none, those in favor of Article XII in the recommended amount. Thank you. And those opposed? Article XII is carried in the recommended amount. Article XIII, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of police services in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $379,232." Do we have a motion?
I'll move Article XIII in the amount of $379,232.
Discussion.
Do we have a reason why it's gone up?
ACO went up $500. Police stayed the same. They did not up their budget this year at all.
Has there been any discussion of defunding the police?
No.
In fact, I think last year, we increased the funding of the police to get more coverage hours. So, interesting question.
I'm talking in reference to current political funding.
I seem to remember over the last few years that the police, the cost to the town for police coverage has been going up pretty, I would say dramatically. I think I remember that. And so this, this is a very small increase, and it seems laudably, really. It seems fabulous that they can keep the cost. There's not even inflation, so that's good.
We do contribute about a quarter of the entire Oxford County Service Department coverage, I think, I believe. I don't have that written down with me, but just for information purposes.
Other discussion about Article 13? Seeing none, those in favor of Article 13 in the recommended amount. Thank you. And those opposed? Article 13 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 14, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Fire Department in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $247,550."
Make a motion to move Fire Department, Article 14, $247,550.
Thank you. Discussion about Article 14.
That, on the other hand, looks a little, you know, if there's an increase, it looks like about 4% or 5%. And do we have a reason for that?
They, call volume, mutual aid, and wages for the firemen. Where the minimum wage went up, we have them a little also.
Other discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, those in favor of Article 14 in the recommended amount. Thank you. And those opposed? Article 14's carried in the recommended amount. Article 15, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the annual, of the ambulance service in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $302,883."
I motion to move Article 15 in the amount $302,883. Second?
Thank you. Discussion on Article 15?
Same question.
Again, it was wages. When minimum wage went up, had to keep the drivers, ambulance attendants getting more than minimum wage for all the training and everything else that they have to do.
Other discussion on Article 15? Seeing none, those in favor of Article 15 in the recommended amount. Thank you. And those opposed? Article 15 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 16, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation for the solid waste management program in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $495,411."
Make a motion to move Article 16 to $495,411.
Thank you. Discussion about Article 16, solid waste.
Were there any ability to shop for this product?
Although their, our contract ends...
September.
September. And so we have to renegotiate that. But also, there's a, we formed a committee, we're trying to form a committee. We're forming, we formed a committee to look at solid wastes throughout the three communities that participate in our solid waste, try to get a handle on this.
And the other piece that we increased was the food waste. Last year, we only budgeted $9,500, and this year, we even boosted it to $18,000. Dean Richmond has been collecting food waste from multiple businesses in the, mostly very vast...
And that saves us money.
Yeah.
On the solid waste.
Lot of wheat, right?
Well, because it removes the food waste from the more expensive trash.
Do you have any sense of what proportion is between residential trash and construction demolition?
I don't have those figures in front of me, but we can get those from...
Is Bethel the only town in Maine that lets contractors dispose of their demolition waste for free?
Pretty much. They, every town handles things differently.
Is that going to be reconsidered as the...
Yes.
Yeah. Is this mainly the volume going through there, or is it the prices are going up to dispose of it also?
Oh, everything. Yeah. Right down to the haul-in and tip and fees.
Other discussion? All those in favor of Article 16 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 16 carries in the recommended amount. Article 17, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the Public Works Department fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $603,731."
Make a motion to move Article 17 to $603,731.
Thank you. Discussion on Article 17, Public Works. Seeing none, those in favor of Articles 17 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 17 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 18, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the coal block in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $28,140."
Move Article 18 for $28,140.
Second?
Thank you. Discussion on Article 18, Coal Block.
Obviously, this has nothing to do with reconstructing the front steps or anything.
Correct.
That's a capital, that's a capital expenditure. This is just day-to-day.
I thought it went down.
We put in so much insulation and new windows over the last couple of years, it doesn't cost as much to heat it.
Other discussion? Those in favor of Article 18 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 18 carries in the recommended amount. Article 19, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the fire station in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $25,025."
Make a motion to move Article 18 to $25,025.
Discussion on Article 19, Fire Station. Seeing none, those in favor of Article 19 as proposed? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 19 carries in the recommended amount. Article 21, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the operation of the town garage in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $22,600."
I'll move Article 20 in the amount of $22,600.
Discussion on Article 20, Town Garage. Seeing none, those in favor of Article 20. Thank you. And those opposed? Article 20 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 21, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of Green Leaf Station in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $17,380."
I'll move Article 21 to $17,380.
Thank you. Discussion on Article 21, Green Leaf Station. In the back? The ambulance garage? The ambulance garage? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 21 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 21 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 22, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the general assistance program in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $2,500."
I'll move Article 22 in the amount of $2,500.
Discussion?
What does that go to?
In the back?
How much if it got used last year?
The question was, how much was used last year?
We did use quite a bit last year, and I didn't have that right there.
Dave, it's if someone has a, if someone, you apply for, if you have a pressing financial need, and it's basically a pass through, the state gives us $2,500 that we can give out.
Do we anticipate higher needs this year due to the pandemic? Should we...
No.
This number's been there for decades.
Yeah, Amy's got the amount that was spent.
Well, it's an unusual year. That's what I'm saying.
Last year, we used $1,702.95 in that.
Thank you. Other discussion? All those in favor of Article 22 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Motion, Article 22 carries in the recommended amount. Article 23, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of the Recreation Board in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $51,800."
Make a motion to move Article 23 to $51,800.
Second?
Discussion of Article 23, Rec Board. Seeing none, those in favor of Article 23 in the recommended amount? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 23 carries in the recommended amount. Article 24, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of Angeline Park in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $13,440."
Make a motion to move Article 24 to $13,440.
Discussion on Article 24, Angeline Park. Seeing none, those in favor of Article 24 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 24 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 25, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for operation of Fountain Park and Cemetery in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $13,760."
Motion to move Article 25 forward to $13,760.
Discussion on Article 25, Park and Cemetery.
Why is there so much left?
Last year, we had $10,000 for the pathway in there, and then we had $3,000 for the skate park.
Other question?
Where's the cemetery? Is that the one on the river?
We have, we have a lot of cemeteries.
Oh, just for all, okay, okay.
Other questions? All those in favor of Article 25 in the recommended amount? Thank you. And those opposed? Article 25 carries in the recommended amount. Article 26, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for contributions local in fiscal year 21." And you can read the itemized list of $83,450 as recommended by the Selectmen and Budget Committee. Do we have a motion?
Motion to move the article as spoken for $83,450. Second?
Discussion. Yes? Right here.
What's the deal with the snowmobile trails? Out of curiosity, I see this year was 1,178, and this year is zero contributions?
We send out letters for them to send back saying that they want the request, and they never send it back.
Okay.
Good question. Other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 26 in the amount of $83,450. Thank you. And those opposed? Article 26 carries in the recommended amount. Article 27, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for contributions agencies in fiscal year 21." And you can see the itemized list, the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $11,712.
Make a motion to move Article 27 for $11,712.
Discussion on Article 27, contributions agencies. Seeing none, those in favor of Article 27? Thank you very much, those opposed. Article 27 is carried in the recommended amount. Article 28, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for employee benefits in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $473,669.
Move Article 28 in the amount of $473,669.
Second.
Discussion.
So, do we just have more employees? Are we giving them more benefits? What's the?
We have the same benefits. The insurance has went up some, and we got a few more family, families, I should say, not individuals, so.
Family insurance coverage?
Yes. Thank you.
Work and comp insurance and unemployment insurance also increased greatly.
But that's not an employee benefit, is it?
It's what it's under.
It is?
Yes, it is.
What it's put under? Yeah, okay. What's been the trend over the last, say, five years with employee benefits?
I mean, and it's driven more than anything by health insurance.
Further discussion?
I'm done.
You're done? Stick a fork in it. Other discussion? All those in favor of Article 28 in recommended amount? Thank you, and those opposed. Article 28 carries in the recommended amount. Article 29, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for municipal insurance in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $51,463.
Make a motion to move Article 29 for $51,463.
Second. Thank you very much. Discussion of Article 29.
Is this liability insurance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other discussion? All those in favor of Article 29 and the recommended amount? Thank you, and those opposed? Article 29 carries in the recommended amount. Article 30, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service in fiscal year 21. Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $98,637.13.
Make a motion to move Article 30 for $98,637.13.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on Article 30, debt service? Probably not much wiggle room there.
It's gone down a lot.
It went down, and we paid off some debt.
All those in favor of Article 30 and the recommended amount? And those opposed? Thank you. Article 30 carries in the recommended amount. Article 31, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate from undesignated, oop, timeout. See what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate from its undesignated fund balance to reduce FY 20. The Selectmen and the Budget Committee recommend $100,000.
Move Article 31 for $100,000.
Is there discussion?
What was it last year?
What was the, what was the undesignated fund balance reduction last year?
I think it was $100,000. Amy's checking, but I think it was $100,000. I don't think it was $200,000.
Dave was whatever redacting.
What's your?
It was $200,000.
Yeah. Last year, it was $200,000?
What does that leave in the undesignated fund?
Say it again.
What does it leave in the undesignated fund? What's the balance of the undesignated?
The balance right now is $2,484,444.2.
All right, all right. And, okay. And what's, you know, at the time, is that a reasonable place to be? I mean, somewhere, this has been debated, and $100,000 seems like a reasonable amount to, to assign like this.
Personally, this year, I wouldn't go any higher than $100,000. Because we don't know what's going to be happening, more than normal with the COVID. And, but then again, our revenues, we've been doing very well on our revenues, so.
What was our fund balance last year?
Around the same. It wasn't.
I thought it was a million eight something.
I think you might be right.
What was the balance last year?
You know, I don't remember too many, but.
Amy, is that something you can garner? No?
I don't have it with me now, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Wait. What was the year-over-year increase in revenue experience?
Say the question again.
The year-over-year increase in revenue?
Year-over-year increase in revenue.
Like, the only thing that comes to my mind right now is excise tax. We thought with the COVID, we'd be hurting on excise tax, and we're actually above what we projected for last year. Last year, we projected $500,000, and we've already got $6.
People have nothing else to do but pay their interest.
Sure, they might. Well, the thing is, they're buying new cars with 0% interest and 90-day no payment.
That being said, there are also many revenues that are less than what we expected, like from the state, their assistance program, we did not receive as much as expected. Our revenues are pretty much spot on to what we thought they were going to be this last year.
I guess I had the experience that subjectively, you see huge homes being built in town, and you expect that the property tax revenue is increasing, but I don't actually know if that's true or not.
That doesn't necessarily increase the revenue to the town per se, it just, so that you take the entire property value and you divide it by what we decide we need. So, it doesn't, and if we calculate that correctly, then we take in just the money that we need. It might mean that your property taxes could theoretically go down if we reevaluate, if we revalue all the properties. But it doesn't necessarily mean, because the assessors are still going to go through and adjust the mill rate for everybody.
But if someone takes a $100,000 lot and builds a $1 million home on it, there's added value which has been taxed, correct?
Right, but in the meantime, the assessors would then probably, probably say that we, everyone needs to pay a smaller percentage of tax because to meet the goal that we need to meet in the run of town. But I won't promise that will happen. That's just theoretically what should, if the, if the property value grows, then the tax mill rate should increase. But it doesn't, as long as the budget doesn't go up.
So, we're growing in proportion to our expenses.
Right, right. Because the contractors who are building those $1 million homes are dumping all the construction waste in the.
Yes.
If we pass the budget as presented here, is it up or down from last year?
The budget itself is down from last year.
So, the question on the floor is the amount of the undesignated fund balance to be attributed to paying down taxes this year. The recommended amount is $100,000. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of Articles 31 and the amount of $100,000? Thank you, and those opposed. Article 31 is carried in the amount of $31,000, of $100,000. Article 32, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for capital improvements in fiscal year 21. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend $806,374.
I'll move Article 32 for $806,374.
Second. Thank you. You can see the recommended capital expenditures as compared to last year. Discussion on capital expenditures, Article 32. Question was, did we pave Chapman Street last year?
We did, but it has to set a year, and then you pay, do the top vote.
I have a question about the water district building. Does the $10,000 just like what you're expecting someone to bid to do that?
Water district.
I mean, yeah, the demolition.
Oh, oh, oh. Yeah, that's demolition. That was the estimate I got from.
From some contractors?
Yes.
To go dump it in our dump for free?
Oh, well, they have to dig it, yeah. Yeah. We paid them to.
It seems like a lot.
Take care of us. He said that was, he said it wouldn't be any more than that.
Well, that's good.
But that was, you know.
There's a question in the back.
Yes.
Could you tell me what the cardiac monitor is, please?
I'm sorry, can't hear.
Can you tell me what the cardiac monitor is?
Cardiac monitor.
So, the cardiac monitor is actually for a reserve, and it really is to try to gain money for future cardiac monitors and ambulances instead of it all coming out in one year? You thought it'd be better to try to spread and, you know, basically accumulate some funds for that?
Jeffrey? Kind of a question to you, Lauren, and maybe also to the, to the committee. And I'm assuming that this is being debated, but I can't tell from this whether we're going up or whether we're flat or whether we're going down in terms of the way we are maintaining our infrastructure around town, particularly paving, bridges, those kind of things. Can you give me some kind of read on that?
I can't, because I haven't been doing this long enough to give you too much information. But Scott, can you answer the part of that? On the favorite part?
We typically try to plan somewhere in the neighborhood of $400,000 with the road work each year. We've been consistently kind of close to that from the end to the end.
Yeah, my question is really a sort of subjective look at, are we doing okay with this? Are we not doing okay maintaining the place? What's the sense?
I see, from what I've seen, I think they're doing a good job at maintaining.
So, then we're allocating enough money on an annual basis?
I think so.
Okay, great.
Scott, does that reflect your view?
Yes. And we're doing about what we can handle here. And I think, I think it's working out. I think we'll make it a difference. That's my opinion.
Yep. Thank you.
What are the numbers behind the paving items?
Numbers behind the paving?
Number, Pender Vale Road paving.
Oh, mileage.
Mileage.
Mileage, I suppose. Mileage?
Around the road, they're going to go.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on capital expenditures? Yes, sir.
Where does the choice of roads that are being paved come from?
We have a road program that we developed, some sort of a plan. We're nearing the end of that plan. It's spelled out in a five-year capital plan right now. We've tried to gain another committee, like a road committee, to resurvey the roads. The state, state provided us with a program. We input the information, and it spits out, this is where you should start first, so that you let, you know. So, we've been trying to work through that program, so.
Okay, because the west end of Grover Hill has been unpaved for many, many, many years.
Yeah, it's probably three, four years now. We got one more section we need to dig up. You do the traffic study, Grover Hill Road doesn't seem that many cars compared to Pender Vale Road. It isn't a total justification, but road priority, road traffic, road, all things are factors in what you plan for us. We had to do Chapman Street, think we got to move things around, guess Grover Hill Road got pushed off last. I mean, I think it was supposed to be in the plan this year, but we pushed it off for another year, and then Chapman Street last year, and then tried to hedge up.
But I think it's more closer to five years that it's been dug up?
Yeah, and there's going to be a couple more sections that'll be, need to reclaim before we can pave it.
Other questions on the capital program? Seeing none, those in favor of Article 32 and the recommended amount? Thank you, and those opposed? Article 32 is carried in the recommended amount. Any other motions to come before the body?
I heard a motion to adjourn.
All those in favor of adjournment? It carries. Thank you very much.